This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Sorry, I didn't get a chance to send you the edit.
Okay.
All right, guys, calling the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for May 1st, 2023 to order at 6:00 PM. We stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So hopefully Joy is on her way. I haven't heard that she's not coming. We are recording tonight. It's not live, but it's recording and it will be up on our website within the next day or two. All right, we have, let's see, get all our papers here. So open time for the public.
I'm just wondering about May 24th.
Yes.
Is that the date?
We haven't actually confirmed. So I can announce that it's confirmed, all parties from the town side as well as our consultant, the facilitator. So May 24th, and I guess, I'm not sure if we were thinking 6 o'clock or 7 o'clock. We usually do the town stuff at 7, but we might compromise and do a 6:30. So we haven't quite figured out the timing. It'll be at our school.
Thanks.
So yes, that is, that is the plan. So no changes there. Okay? That's good. Anything else, Jose?
No.
No? Okay. All right. So our business tonight is really to look at the, both the town election warrant as well as the town meeting warrant. And we know we have some, so new little wrinkles that have come up. So yes, John.
Could I ask that maybe before we get into all this, that maybe we get a public update on what's happened in the past 72 hours and what options are currently being considered at Hampshire Regional High School as we speak?
Yeah.
Those three options, maybe what the potential outfall is and why we may be considering moving the town meeting and/or town elections and/or announcing layoffs or reduction in staff for the public?
Yeah, right. So, well, Ed, you are more familiar with it than I am, but basically we've got three options from Hampshire Regional. They have got, they had a meeting of their finance committee this afternoon to vote on the three options that they presented for the use of the certified excess and deficiencies money. And they are meeting at 7:00.
And I would say just for those at home, it's because they have a surplus of over 9.5%.
Right.
And they have to by law return portion of that to the.
Correct. So anything over 5% is supposed to come back to the towns. That was certified at $617,734 a few weeks ago. We use that figure in terms of the amount that would come back to Southampton, which I believe was around $341,000 or something like that.
$341,000 and $700.
Yeah, $341,000. We use that to put into our budget as a credit toward FY24 funds rather than for FY23.
Correct.
If I'm not correct, holler at me here.
Because FY23 would, we wouldn't be able to use it, right? It would be pretty much free cash and we'd have to wait for it to be certified before it could be used.
Right.
So that's why it's so important now it be a credit in '24.
Right. So what they have come back with now, which we didn't know that they were going to do, is we have three options that they have to vote on tonight. One of them is recommendation one, which is to take the entire amount, the way I understand it, of the excess and basically not return it to the towns at all, but to keep it for their, to add to their excess, excess and deficiency fund to further use in the future.
They would reclassify school choice use to allow them to maintain 100%.
Right, exactly, to keep that. So that's option one, which is not our favorite desire here. Recommendation two was to apply the amount of excess to the '24 budget, which was kind of where we were at. But the amount that we would be getting back would not be the $340,000. It would be $190,000 instead of the $340,000. So that leaves us with automatically a shortfall of $150,000 compared to the budget that we've already put forth. And then the third option is to basically reduce the current FY23 assessments by the full $617,000, which then effectively gives us the whole $340-ish thousand back to us, but it would come back for FY23, not for FY24.
Correct. It would be credited against our fourth quarter 2023 assessment.
Right.
So we'd get all $341,000 back.
Right.
However, we cannot appropriate it this year even at a special, a regular or a special town meeting during 2023. So what it means is it would actually have to go through the 2023 closeout process and be certified in that November, December, January timeframe as free cash before we could utilize it and appropriate it through a town meeting.
And then we'd have to have a special town meeting to further appropriate that amount of money somewhere like in January-ish or.
Well, you could, basically, once it's certified, yes, you could have a special town meeting and then appropriate it either for specific uses into the stabilization funds. And I will say that another caveat of that is, okay, please remember that, and I'm not going to mess it up, I know, 30% will go into capital stabilization, 35 into operational stabilization, 10% into HOPEP at a minimum, and that would leave 25% still in free cash.
For free cash, right, exactly. So that's, those are the three options that we, that they laid out for us as of like, what, 48 hours ago or something? So yeah, yeah. Read it. Go ahead, question.
So then I'm curious to know why your letter then recommended option two, which was a drastic reduction from what we anticipate. Can't we just combine two and three and say, we want the full amount back? No.
No. They are going to ask that question of DOR, but the presumptive answer is going to be that no, you can't treat one town differently from another. And also that difference between the $341 and the $190, which Chris had actually asked me about, I don't know the answer today. It's because if we get it back in '23, the calculations are based on what?
The old assessment.
Minimum that spending is in '23. If it comes back in '24, it's on the minimum net spending in '24, so that changes the values.
So it seems like they're, to me, it looks like they're looking for a way to bypass giving the money back by moving school choice money around? So basically, they're trying, the options, none of them are our best option.
No, that's correct. In my opinion, none of them.
Can I ask why this, this other one, you know, the one we discussed, we believed we had in place for them to credit us in fiscal year '24?
It was never in place, that's the problem.
No, in our mind, it was in place in our budget.
And we had told them that's what we were going to do.
And we told them, why was that not an option? Did they ever ask any, I mean, I know you spoke to them about it.
Because of the fact that the calculations are different for '23 and '24, because of the minimum net spending.
And they believe, because they still have time to do it, that they're required to do it in '23. But what I would say is option number one, they keep 100% of the money and their 2.1 surplus now becomes $2.6 million in surplus funds. And we have to fill 300, we have to cut $320,000 of expenses from the town budget.
While they're sitting on a surplus.
Right. Which basically means we're down to personnel, in my view. Option two, we only get $190,000, means tonight we got to cut $151,000, the difference between the $340,000. Option three, we got, we got to figure out a way to temporarily cut $340,000 from the budget and hope that free cash can get certified on October 1st or sometime in October, and we only go three or four months without those crucial money services.
And there is another option, in my opinion.
Which is?
Which is, and of course, depending on their vote, it may not work out this way, is cut the $150,000 out of Budget A, supplement or supplement it with operational stabilization. If they vote option two, we're still in business.
Okay. And we have the $150 in stabilization to play with.
To do that. Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, so that is a fourth option. Okay.
I guess I want to, I need to understand better their budget process, that they end up with an excess like this. So looking carefully at their budgets, what's built in there so that at the end of the year they have leftover money and we're over, you know, we're scrambling because we're overspent? I would question, not for this year, but for next year, what's done is done.
Well, as much as things have certainly been much more transparent this year comparatively to everything I've heard about the past budgets. I mean, that's been a good thing, but then all of a sudden we've got this snowball coming at us here that certainly wasn't foreseen.
Because the town is ultimately going to be hurt tremendously.
Nor a school but not suffer one penny, if you ask me. Nor a school but not suffer one penny.
So anyway, so those are the options before us. Ed has done a letter back to them formally saying that we, out of all the choices, if we have our druthers, we would like to go on record as the one that we prefer is option two.
Well, I was very safe in that because the select board had not taken a vote. I do believe it's our best option, but it's on my letterhead, so it's technically my thought.
Okay. But you and I discussed it. So that's, so that is at least something that's, you know, just formally in writing for them, for what it's worth, as they consider things. And what you've said now is that they've got to go through a 2/3 majority vote tonight, so that may take them a while.
You also said the finance committee voted in favor of option three?
Three.
The school committee's, finance committee did vote to recommend option three.
They voted this afternoon?
At their afternoon meeting today. I did join the Zoom meeting.
So it seems to me that, I guess I just need you to explain to me why you think option two is better than option three? If there's any expenses that we can, that come in, you know, second half of the fiscal year or whatever, it just seems to me like we're just sacrificing a lot of money here by just choosing the second one. It's still, none of them are the option that we want.
None of them are the option that any of us want. If option two did come back, at least we're getting $190,000 credit against our assessments for next year. So we would still have that to use for the fiscal year '24 budget instead of $0. So instead of cutting, trying to cut $341,000 or make up somewhere else $340,000, we're only looking to make up $150,000.
You're saying we can get.
Yeah, but what can we do to have, to have option three? If that's what the finance committee is recommending, like what could we do with the FY24 budget, knowing what we know now, to go ahead and maximize the full amount that we're getting?
Well, you said the $150 into stabilization, right?
Well, I mean, if, if they vote option three, really means to get back to a balanced budget, we either have to bring in revenues from somewhere else or make cuts totaling The other thing to keep in the back of our minds is the override ballot question and the override article in the ATM warrant is $332,000 more than what the operating budget in A is. So you've got $341,000 out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Basically, the ballot question at that point in time. Unless you're, unless the select board was willing to ask for utilization of $341,000 in operational stabilization, which I'm.
In operations stabilization?
I'd have to go look. I believe it's between $450,000 and $500,000.
Well, what about also something like what John just mentioned about trying to get free cash certified as soon as possible? We need to move money over to cover that audit ASAP and get that funded and get that going. We're hoping that it's going to be quicker process this time around. Is there anything we could do to actually, that's only one quarter. What could we do to actually certify free cash? And I'm just trying to not, I'm trying to maximize the amount of money from the E and D fund.
Then probably the other alternate, alternative would be reduce the budget A by the $341,000 and make those deep cuts and then look to, and you're obviously operating on the fact that that is your yearly budget, because you don't know if you're going to be able to get approval of changing it. So, and then, you know, halfway through the year or whatever, try to restore.
Restore those positions.
Restore those positions, exactly. Of course, don't forget, unless you do it with position, if you do positions, if you do it with positions that are filled, you've also got to have, will have an increase in unemployment insurance.
Sure. You know, I mean, if anywhere, we'd end up having to look, if we were to go that route, I mean, I think we'd have to look at positions that are currently not filled, which have been, you know, a challenge for us already. And maybe we can get through another quarter of the fiscal year.
Well, that would start to be far too cheap for the director of COA. I mean, think of the vacancies that are coming up, the vacancies that we currently have.
We've got current vacancies as well.
I was thinking about the mechanic at the highway department that we haven't been able to fill.
Yeah.
So I mean, there's 50, 55,000. The assistant treasurer collector's job is vacant right now, haven't been able to fill that. There's another 30, 35, 40,000.
COA?
Yep.
Can I ask another question? Maybe I already heard this, but why wasn't it an option to do credit for FY24?
What's that?
Why wasn't it an option to do what we wanted to do in the first place? Was it, why didn't they list it as option four? Is it?
Well, option two is what we wanted, but because of the fact that we weren't aware of the fact that because the mechanics or the mathematics of fiscal year '24, because of minimum educational spending requirements and whatever is going to change the formulas, that we were going to get less back than the $341,000.
Yeah. So we would have never, with, with option two, we'd never get the $340,000, is that correct?
Correct.
And what would we get? Does anybody else want to tell you? That's it?
Yeah, that's the quote unquote savings on their, their presentation list?
Oh, yeah, I mean.
That would be all that we would get back, right? Is that the word?
Correct.
Am I correct?
Because they're choosing.
FY23 and FY24?
What's that?
Is that the difference between FY23 and FY24? Yeah, basically, but with two different formulas calculated, right? So, yeah, we'd get $190,596.
Well, keep in mind, FY23's budget, they increased their E and D usage of money. So it, part of that is still in the shell game. Like if had this not come up, they were already putting in an extra $340,000, you break out our piece. I mean, I think that's what some of this difference between the $190 and $340 is.
Goodness.
Probably some of the difference at the end of every fiscal year that they do on their, behind, what did I say? Behind the curtain that keeps them under 5%.
Right.
E and D.
Yep.
Then I go back to what I said originally. We have to look very carefully at their original budget.
Going forward.
Going forward.
No doubt about it.
Well, we did, I think we did.
I mean, you know, we had more.
I spoke up at the meeting and basically what I heard was, we're going to okay this budget because it's not our job to decide what's in the best interest of the school and the money. It's the town's job to decide whether we can fund it or not, which I think is ridiculous.
Anyway, I think we had more daylight on their budget this year than we've had in a long time. So it's a good recommendation.
The one piece that's missing that hopefully will come out with Mickey, who's taking over as the CFO up there or the business administrator, is the one piece they don't show is the line item transfers at the end of the year, which accounts were underspent, which, because then you'll see them all funnel out to school choice. And then that's made whole because that's an unlimited amount of money they can keep.
Yeah.
And that's where you have, on the next budget cycle, we have to get our six reps to look at those transfer line items.
Do they have the liberty of giving mid-year raises? Because I know they did. I'm just wondering, do they have the liberty of being able to do that?
If at all, probably just non-union personnel.
Yeah.
Right.
Like central office.
Yeah. Okay. Because there were several people in the central office that got raises and they weren't on the original line of the budget.
Yep.
So all this gets us to, is there any way that we're going to be able to sign anything tonight? Or do we go plan B and just start pushing everything out?
What a nightmare.
Yeah, it is a nightmare.
Yep. And I realize there's negative impacts on doing that. So if we're going to consider moving the election, we should probably hear from the town clerk.
So, you know, or the other option is, you can move the town meeting and say pretty much that no matter what we do, the override's currently off the table. So the election could go on as scheduled.
But with the override off the table, then we're back into hot water with East Hampton's only going to provide coverage until October, right? Under their agreement and then bye-bye ambulance service. So I, I mean, I'm not saying I'm okay with that, but if that's what we're going to do, then we need, the public needs to know that there's a real probability that in October, you're not going to get an ambulance from town. That's not going to be an option anymore. In full disclosure, not that we've been able to staff it 24/7 anyways, but.
Well, you'd only get it when you've got, you've got an EMT on the, a paramedic on the shift.
Yeah, but if we're not even going to give them the $332 extra that they need to do it, we're, we're not helping the cause at all. Right? I mean, option A or budget one from the fire department is even less than what they, what they wanted because we wanted to try and true, true it up.
Yeah, so we put more money into the wages for fire and EMT.
I just, can I just say something to Chris?
Yes, go ahead.
If you move the election out, I'm just going to say, after the town meeting, that means, well, the new people, or before the town meeting, the new people that are elected are not going to have any experience working with budget. Two people that are leaving.
Sure.
Who have been working on the budget and all of this.
Which is why we changed the bylaw in the first place.
In the first place was to make.
Yeah, we totally recognize that. Just we're trying to figure out the best solution here.
How, how would it be if, if we did, were assuming, since their finance committee is going to recommend option two, that we just.
Three. They opted for three for them. They voted on option three today.
Option three, I'm sorry.
Which means we get it all back, but not.
But not, that's right.
We get it this year, but we can't use it right away.
All back, meaning 300 and something?
340.
In this year, in this fiscal year.
But we get it back this year, cannot use it until we get free cash for FY22 done. So that means closing the books, audit the whole bit, and a special town meeting to reappropriate funds. So that's, you know, six months down the road.
Well, I think we just have to find out the balance in the operational stabilization.
Well, Ed said he thought it was around $400,000 or something.
I believe it was $450 or $500.
So why don't we just supplement the budget with an article on taking the operational stabilization and.
And then replacing it with that article.
As soon as possible, get a special town meeting as soon as possible.
Can we take all of it?
Well, I wouldn't take all of it because that's more than.
Oh, well, I mean, yeah, we, we need $400.
But what I would probably recommend doing, if the select board considered doing that, and I'm not thrilled about taking 341, but if you were going to do that, I would actually do it and earmark it for the Hampshire Regional assessment.
Yes.
Because that's where we took it, that's where we took it in the beginning.
So that when we get it back.
Well, don't forget, it's a 2/3 vote to get it out for the first one. So you got to get, you need that 2/3 vote at town meeting.
Okay. Well, that would make sense. And then we could replace it when we got it.
But we, well, could we though? Only because when that $340 comes back to us, it's going to come back as a bigger number as part of free cash.
And then we have to split it up with.
Well, we're not required to, it's just strongly suggested, but if we have those votes.
Right.
And those percentages.
Right.
But why, explain why we would want it earmarked coming out as the assessments of Hampshire Regional.
Because number one, that's what we're technically using it for. Number two, it is a heck of a lot easier than saying no, writing it out into 42 different accounts.
Plus it's very clear to the voter's side as to why we're doing it.
Yeah, I understand that part. I just didn't know if we would be able to, we're getting the money now. I'm just wondering, when we get free cash, we would just be replacing it, the same amount.
Into operational stabilization.
But that was using this as a little interest free loan.
But that was our intended use of the funds to begin with, was to apply it to next year's assessment.
Right, right, right. So it's basically.
Just doing it, you know, we're not changing.
So long as we get the full amount.
It's just how we go about it.
Now, were there any articles that were asking for operational stabilization? I didn't see anything that was coming out of there. There's no extra things that we were going to use it for?
Out of the current town meeting.
No, I mean, that, that you didn't mention up till now?
No. No.
So can we, can we kind of jump over to the articles for a second? Just so I understand.
Just one thing too, so that.
Go ahead.
So if we, if we went ahead with this option three, assuming that they may end up giving that vote in that direction tonight, we would work on the funds from stabilization to cover that. And our override is still with us or gone?
Still with us.
It would still be with us.
Still with us.
Okay. We just have to have a special town meeting down the road.
The whole part of the linear thing that I focus on is as long as we end up with a budget A of the same dollar amount that we have now, the override still works, whether it's through an ATM article or whether it's through the ballot.
Because our, our budget right now is still the 19872.
And we still looking to transfer some money into this fiscal year for the audit, right? $41,000 or something like that?
I think it's like a total of $13,000.
13, additional, right, right, right. And that is going to be on the warrant, right?
That is.
It is, transfers. Yep. So John, you wanted to look at what?
Well, I just want to see, you know, can we, can we talk about voting the budget at town meeting differently than how we traditionally do it? And that right now, it's all under Article V, one article?
Yeah, he does it.
It is, but breaks it out by section, right?
But can we just have an up or down vote on the single line item for Hampshire Regional? Not the education, because Norris and transportation would be in there. Because one of the things that I would say, if we put this $341 in, I still think they need to explain the $2.1 million surplus of taxpayer money they've been able to get out of the towns, which 1.1 is coming from Southampton and they've scrolled that away for years. So, I mean, I for one, am just going to vote against the Hampshire Regional budget. And if two towns vote against it, they've got to go back to the table and they've got to sharpen their pencil and look at their line items. But I don't want to vote no if that means I'm voting no against Norris.
Right.
So we just thought that one line item for Hampshire Regional as a separate vote.
And so what we have now on, looking at the education.
And the other way to do that is to have a different amount in their assessment than what they've asked for.
Yeah, just as long as I can vote no without voting against Norris.
Because I talked to the town council today. She said, she said, we were fine the way it's currently written. And if it passed that way, it's basically 300, well, if they do option three, it's $341,000 short. Okay? So it's not what they asked.
So the way the budget is now, in theory, the shortfall of 341, even though we have the revenue piece to make up for it.
And then if another town were to do the same thing or vote against it, that's two of the five, they don't have a budget, it drives it back to them.
Right. But, but doing it that way, you're not able to get up and give the speech and explain why.
Why, yeah.
Because you'd have to know that's a different number than what they asked for to be able to vote it down.
Then the other way, and this is assuming operational stabilization is the way the select board wants to go and that it actually passes, because they're going to have to write an article before the operating budget for that, put it back to the full amount on town meeting floor, make a motion to reduce it by $100,000 or whatever, just to get their attention.
Because right now, out of the, if you look at the sub buckets right in our budget, so the education section, the total is $12,326, of which 5.2 is Hampshire Regional. so the education section, the total is $12,326, of which 5.2 is Hampshire Regional operating.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm fine with vocational, I'm fine with transportation, I'm fine with Norris, and I don't know if school choice is in there or not, but I'm fine with those of, I'm just, and I don't wanna be in a spot where I have to vote against Norris and all that, just to send them off to Hampshire Regional. So I don't know if there's a way we can word it on what we sign to make sure that it's separate.
That's an interesting way of handling it.
Yeah. Do you have a thought, Robert?
I don't have a thought right now, because it's new news.
Yeah.
We can do it.
Pressed to, yeah.
We'll work it out later.
Okay.
I mean, maybe it's just modifying that spreadsheet, so Hampshire Regional's its own sub-tag or, and the rest of education is together.
That's what I was wondering, if we could break that out as a separate, separate thing, because everything else, I mean...
Yeah, everything else is local one.
Everything is, yeah.
Basically, we make it an amendment.
Or an amendment to the article, is that what you're saying? Yeah, because everything else in there is Norris and local school transportation, vocational transportation, and vocational tuition. So there's five, five items in there, so if that were to be changed. So if that were not the current 5252, you're saying that we would make that a lower amount?
Well, the 52 is with the credit in there. So I would change that back to their full ask.
Put the 341 back in there.
Correct. And then, because we'll have the offset, assuming that the money comes out of stabilization, right? So the budget will still be equalized, so to speak. But then that's when we give up, get up and give the speech and get that line item voted down.
It would still be in balance as long as the question to use operational stabilization to ask by 2/3.
Right, right. But what, are you talking about reducing it by 100?
Well, if someone wants to get their, I went through a bunch of scenarios with legal counsel today. If we wanted to vote down or not approve the Hampshire Regional budget, how would we go about doing that? Because in my previous life, that regional school budget was a separate article, it didn't fit into the town's operating budget, so it was clear of where it was. So we went through a number of scenarios. So basically, if operational stabilization passes, we'd be back to a balanced budget, they'd be back to a full assessment. What someone could do just to get Hampshire Regional's attention and get them to answer the specific question is make a motion on town meeting floor, hopefully get second, so you have a discussion of reducing their assessment by whatever you think the dollar amount is to get their attention.
I just worry that it's complicated enough for voters to, you know, like, if we're gonna start mixing up, you know, messing up the numbers, I'd rather just take the deficit out of operational stabilization and put it back in, but vote against the Hampshire Regional budget as requested. That's what I'd rather do. I just feel like it's gonna be complicated to then try to make up...
Right, and if we still, if we, so now we go back to, let's not move the town meeting and stay on the ninth. We're still the first out of the five to hold the vote.
Right.
Which has not been the case, right?
Right, we're usually the caboose.
And what, which town, was it Chesterfield, their school committee chair, Trish?
They wrote in, yes.
Chesterfield.
They were asking for which option?
Number 3.
3L.
And the 3L, so...
But that's Chesterfield. Goshen is already having to do an override, just to support the budget the way it is. And Williamsburg, last they knew, was trying to figure out where to come up with the $100,000 transfer.
Huge assessment.
It'll be interesting, since we're the first, in terms of the strategy of making a single line in our warrant, or Hampshire, that other towns might not follow, in order to get it. If this is as big an issue for them as it is for us.
Yeah, it's probably bigger, their numbers are double-digit.
Yeah, yeah. In terms of percentages, yes. So the impact is, yeah, the impact is the same for all of us.
So, do you wanna go through the warrant?
Well, let's, let's figure, I mean, I think we're, we sound like we're reaching toward a similar mindset here, of hanging on to the special town, I'm sorry, the annual town meeting as is, but with this, this option. So I'd almost rather we...
I would be in support, if there's enough money in, what is it, stabilization, operational stabilization? If there's enough money in operational stabilization to cover the 340-some-odd thousand dollars, then we add an article on that. We break out the Hampshire Regional line item to allow us to get up and speak why it should be voted down, and hope that our constituents listen, and then that gets voted down. And go for it. So if, if we do all that, then I'm okay with leaving the calendar as is, as we move forward now.
And you would increase this 5.2 by 341,000?
Correct, yeah.
I would go back to, I would try to find, shall we say, a previous version of the budget that had their...
The full amount.
The full assessment in it, and plug that in.
Okay. And yeah, put it in, okay, that works.
But anything that we can do to make, to get that free cash certified? I mean, technically, it's May, we can move money over without having to wait for a town meeting, and, I mean, I just feel like whatever we, we're too late...
We could only do it until June 30th, and then it stops.
Oh, right, right.
And then I would say, I would follow the same course of action if they go with Option 2, because Option 2 still puts us on a $190,000 shortfall, right?
150 shortfall.
Or 151, yeah. Yeah, but when would we get that money?
I think first quarter of, well, I don't know, FY '24, I think, right?
I think, yeah.
Did they say first quarter? I remember what their session was.
Whatever the shortfall is.
It doesn't say when we would get it, it just says this school year.
Based on blah, blah, blah. Apply the entire amount of excess FY '24 proposed budget increase proposing to allocation, whatever. It doesn't say, no.
Yeah, it does, yeah. It just says here, it creates a situation, recommendation 2, creates a situation where FY '24 to '25 increase could be as large as 8%, which obviously would be another challenge, kicking the can down the road on that one, too.
Yes, we are.
So, all right, so I think I'm hearing that, I think I'm hearing that sort of as a motion from John, just to at least get us further into the discussion, because that means we've gotta do a couple of, well, we've gotta go on the capital, I'm gonna go through the capital items that have been voted or recommended to us, and be sure of that. Then we'd have to make these couple article changes, right? And we still need to sign this tonight.
Are these, are these free cash transfers accurate, final?
They're holding, on town meeting floor, they will get amended to be the actuals. And then the other piece of the puzzle will be, I don't think we want to see the 25% of the free cash go poof on June 30th. So this, basically, the three, shall we say, allocate 75% of the free cash, I would recommend taking that extra 25% and putting it into these numbers, whether it be capital stabilization, operating stabilization, what have you. So that would be part of that amendment on town meeting floor.
Because then we could use the money in the early part of next year.
Yeah.
Is that against a bylaw that we have relative to the percentages, or no?
It's not a bylaw, it's a policy.
It's a minimum amount, anyway.
It's a minimum.
Free cash, 25% is a minimum on free cash.
Well, it's what's left over from, from using calculations.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so, and then I came up with a scenario, of if we got the money this year, is there any way we could prepay anything from next year?
Yeah, I was thinking about that, too. I don't think so.
Not enough, I don't think.
I was thinking, what are some of the expenses?
We have a hard enough time prepaying our retirement.
Well, I mean, there's some things that, yes.
I was thinking about that, too.
We have, throughout the year, that's all.
So I think I'm hearing a motion somewhat from John. Could I have a second to that, if everybody's understanding what that is, or have you repeated again?
We benefit from repeating.
So I would, I would make a motion that we, that we utilize operating stabilization fund if either Option 2 or Option 3 are approved, and whatever the number is based on that option, to make up the difference needed there, versus slashing positions from the budget. And that we break out Hampshire Regional's line item of our budget to a standalone line item, we adjust it upwards accordingly to basically undo the credit that we put in there, and that we hold with May 9th for our town meeting, and let the, prepare to sign the warrant for the elections to move forward.
The only thing I might suggest you change in that wording would be, operating stabilization is number one, with capital stabilization as a fallback, and I'm just thinking that because one of the recommendations is $5,000 short, then they recommend that we use our or other funds to that. If free cash comes in above, it would allow us to...
To fully fund something in capital?
Right, exactly. Out of the capital stabilization, as an amendment on town meeting floor.
Yeah.
Does it really technically qualify, does it? Does it qualify? Does it qualify?
Question.
For...
He's talking about the exhaust system at the fire department.
For the capital, they're, when we get to the capital funds that the capital committee has recommended, there's, they've recommended things, but there's one item that is $5,000 short that they're recommending, they can't cover it out of capital, they're recommending we get it from ARPA.
That is, that's not the number I gave them as a title.
Right, right, yes. So what you're recommending, if I understand that, is to make this language, operating and/or capital stabilization, so that we can make a couple of things hold on that. So the wording of the warrant article would be slightly different. Okay, could I have a sec, no? Can I have a second?
I was just wondering if, are you getting on?
Really, no.
I got to go for it, yeah, I understand that.
I just want, before we vote, I just wanna make sure that you get all this...
Yeah, no, no, I think it's time for questions, but Robert, you had something.
Yeah, Robert Flory, College Highway, speaking as town moderator. I'm a big fan of Plan B, and I'm sitting here, and I'm a little nervous about going downstairs in front of a TV camera, live, and giving misinformation. So my Plan B would be to pull the plug on the town moderator warrant article information session tonight, and do it Wednesday, or Thursday.
Oh, that's safer, for sure.
That's safer?
Yeah, for sure.
We're good? We can figure it out? All right, let me call the station.
Thank you, Robert.
Thanks, Robert, that's probably a good idea.
And now we can move on.
Okay, so, shall we go over to the, look at the capital requests that came through?
You gotta call for the vote.
Oh, no, you guys get me all confused. We have so much discussion. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had a discussion, could I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, now, shall we take a look?
Do you just wanna go through article by article?
We can, just to go through and make sure that there's nothing new and different there, but we definitely haven't seen the actual capital recommendations until tonight's meeting. So, all right, so Article 1, transfer from free cash to capital stabilization, and that is just a hold, these first three are just holding numbers until we get the free cash number back.
Which hopefully will be tomorrow, but it'll be too late to actually plug the numbers since this.
Right, so we would just amend it on the floor?
Yes.
Okay, right, so all three of those, so money into capital stabilization, operating stabilization, and OPIB, okay? All right. So these would be amended on the floor. Okay. And Article 4 is the five-year contract for the lease of postage machine for town hall. And, excuse me, per our bylaws, for general government, I believe, any contract longer than three years has to be voted in by the residents. So that's why if we're entering into a five-year contract, this would have to be here.
So then somewhere between 4 and 5, we need to insert 4.1?
It would actually become 5, and then a third number.
Well, just as long as we know that that's gonna happen.
Right, yeah.
Article 5 is gonna be the new request for stabilization.
Right.
Some money from stabilization, you have to be identified.
Right.
Probably 341,000.
We'll go back and I'll see if I can find that, we can figure it out.
What the original assessment was.
And then we'll also have to amend Article 5, because we have the operating budget for fiscal '24 for the amount.
And then when would the Hampshire Regional one fall?
Well, we'll have to, so Article 5...
So there'd be a separate article altogether?
No. It would be part of 5, like when you go through the vicection?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, hang on, so after the postage machine, you wanna keep the postage machine up there, is that fine? We keep that there, but then Article 5 becomes this new stabilization transfer money, right?
Right.
And so then the current Article 5 becomes 6, yes?
As amended.
So, so, just to question that again, we can go ahead and say yes to the rest of Article 5, but say no to the Hampshire Regional part, or does it have to be a separate article?
When we're voting on the budget, if one section fails and the rest passes...
Is the article?
You could make an amendment, or present your position for a certain section of the budget, as anybody can in the audience. So I don't, right now, think it has to be a separate article.
Yeah, I'm agreed, you just pull the Hampshire Regional operating out as, you know, a whole group.
Because I would say, there's probably, nothing prevents us from taking the entire article as one whole vote and doing it, but Robert usually goes by...
Right. General Government, Public Safety, and then Education, so we take them in...
When we get to Education, we break that into two sections.
So how do we say no to Hampshire Regional, but yes to Article 5 as a whole, like, to the rest of the operating budget? Like, we have to have a balanced budget, so how can we say no to Hampshire Regional at this point? As part of this article?
Pull it out as a whole and have discussion just on that one piece of the educational total.
But wouldn't you want it as a separate, not having it as a separate article? Is that what you're saying?
If you want this as a separate article, we're looking at a June town meeting, because that's gonna take me a ton of research, not gonna get done tonight.
So, okay, I just wanna make sure, when you pull it as a whole, what does that, describe what that looks like, then, I'm not clear. When you say, we, so the budget comes up for education, if the total is $12,326. Okay, Robert?
As I divide the total budget, we divide the sections of that particular section of the budget. So we, we, we put all three or four together, and put one aside, or we can go 1, 2, 3, for five, whatever it is, it's a mechanical process.
Right, so when we, when we get to the education, somebody makes an amendment, or moves to separate that line item?
Yeah, or I can suggest doing it, I can do it as moderate.
Okay, which actually probably is not terribly difficult, because then it would be elementary school and local school transportation as one section, in the way the budget's here, anyway, vocational tuition and vocational transportation as a second one, and the third last one is Hampshire Regional operating.
Three sources.
So it'd be broken into three pieces.
Or you can break it into two pieces.
Yeah.
All those above Hampshire Regional operating, and Hampshire Regional capital, because Hampshire Regional capital has nothing in it.
So it's okay for us to go ahead and vote down Hampshire Regional's part of it as a separate line, but then...
The budget total is off.
Then the budget total is off.
If we say no, then you have to have another budget number in for the total that...
Well, it's gonna be that vote before that. That 5, that puts that 340 in there, or whatever the number is, that puts it in there.
Before we get to, yes, before we get to the new 5, well, sorry, what will be number 6 now?
Okay.
So we're inserting a new 5, which will be the transfer of funds from operational stabilization and/or capital, right, to cover the assessment that we took out, essentially.
Right.
Right, so we're putting that 300-ish there, so we're raising the assessment on Hampshire Regional back to its original request, not taking the credit, because right now, the amount we have in the budget, the $5,200,000 for Hampshire Regional, has the credit in it.
Right.
So we wanna, we've gotta add the 300 and something to that in the budget, so our budget number will change a little bit, yeah. So that will happen in the first article before we get to voting on the sections of the budget, the way I understand it.
Right, but I thought we're also voting against the budget, as one of the first member towns.
Only that line item.
Only that line item.
Only as a free cash Hampshire Regional.
Only the line item for Hampshire Regional, not the entire education budget, not the entire town budget. Just that one, one section of the education budget.
Okay, but we'll still end up with a balanced budget?
We should.
Okay.
All right, and then our override budget still comes in the way it is, right? Nothing changes there except the article number?
Correct.
Can I go back, can I go back to the operating?
Yep.
The total amount you have in here is 19,729.
Yeah, I already, yeah.
Robert, these numbers are 19,872.
If you take that, take that number, add the 17,5, and add the 125.
Yeah, I did the same thing.
We got beat up a number of years ago by, I think, I can't remember, was it DOR, I think it was DOR that we were actually double appropriating.
Right, yeah, no, I missed that too. I misadded it, that was my question earlier too.
Thank you.
Okay, so then theoretically, we're at the supplemental budget being Article 7 as we go forward, and then Article 8 becomes the transfer station education, transfer station enterprise budget, and that 212,833 is what we have there. Article 9 is the water enterprise fiscal '24 budget with 1,026,10 and 56 cents there. The new Article 10 will be transfers from the police department for operating FY '23 expenses, and those will be ones from the educational incentive account, basically for police overtime, building expense, police wage account. Okay, and that's a total of $11,000. Next, Article 10, that'll be the, Article 10 becomes 11, and that will be transferred to the library department operating funds.
So seeing that...
Now we have a question.
Do we have to go back and change something in the budget because we're too generous?
Apparently with, the way I'm understanding this, yes, there's a shortage of $1,900, the way I'm understanding that, for the library because of their needing to meet their percentage to qualify for the state aid and accreditation, and by adding money from their wish list budget for utilities, we put in a couple thousand-ish or a little bit more maybe, from the wish list budget into their base budget to cover utility costs based on current trending history, as well as we did some salary adjustments. So they were, they were off probably closer to 5,000 with our generous duty here of trying to help them out. And what I've understood from Johanna, I tried to clarify this, and I think she told me that all they needed was 1,900 because they need to achieve their 19% for their materials costs, I guess, against their total budget to be credited, and they usually rely on fundraising through the friends of the library to pick up that difference. It's probably toward the max of what they will ever do, but they're, it'll be closer to the 2,500-ish, if not closer to 3,000 that they need through the friends to do that. But I've asked twice now about that, so I'm thinking, yes, we need to put in, I think, 1,900. So as we go into the lines of the budget, we probably need to put 1,900 into the, into the materials costs in the library and take that from somewhere, and I would just suggest we take that from the TA salary.
Agreed.
For now.
Because we put in, in theory, we're putting 12,000 for the...
Correct, yeah. And, you know, it's a little, I'm hoping they've got a break, but if not, we've done the best we can and they're gonna have to figure it out, I think, so...
That's the easiest way to do this. Why are we doing a lot of these transfers that typically happen for the FY '23 by the select board? Why are these all becoming warrant articles?
Because it's the beginning of May, Great Apertown meeting is gonna happen, the other one takes, enacts the select board and the finance committee. Finance committee's meetings have been a little bit off.
Right, so in this one...
We're not taking care of all of them, unfortunately, but we're taking care of some of the basic ones.
Some of them, yeah. So Article 10, that now becomes Article 11, transfers for library department operating expenses. So right now, we have library maintenance, library wages, and health insurance added in here for an extra $2,759. Do we have to add in the 1,900 here?
No, no, because that's the huge, you've gotta make an adjustment to the tab in the budget.
In the tab in the budget.
And what line item are we crediting so that we don't...
We may as well do the board of assessors then.
If you know what it is.
I forward you the email from their vote on Thursday morning.
All right, well, let's get to that, come back around.
On the library, is it safe for us to add money to the library maintenance account? Or do they give us an account to add to so we don't...
I think that's, I think that's the name of the account.
I think their formula has gotta be in the materials.
It's gotta be in the materials.
Materials.
Library materials.
Library materials, then I vote, I move to increase library materials by $1,900 for fiscal year '24 and to offset that increase by reducing the town administrator's salary line for fiscal year '24 by an identical amount.
Do I have a second, please?
Second. I only have one amendment. Are you sure the 1,900 is the accurate number? I thought it was 1901.
Okay.
I don't want to be off by anything. If I look back and look at Johanna's...
Okay, take a look at the email, please, then.
I'll accept your amendment to 1905.
Well, I don't want to be off.
If somebody can pull up the email, please, go ahead and pull it up. If you can find it quickly, pull it up. But, yeah, I mean, we've tried to clarify this and...
They're gonna make it up from friends.
She said we come up about 1,900 short.
Okay, 19 even.
And I went back and clarified, saying, are you sure you need only 1,900 and the rest will be made up by friends, I think, right?
If they're gonna be having a reason, it's a problem.
We'll let Francine take a look at that for a second, yeah. And while you're looking at that, because we'll come back around and we'll have to do these, well, we got a motion on the floor, hang on.
Yeah, I see, you would only need 1,900 from the town.
It's 1,924, that's right.
In '24, so, oh, in '24, yeah.
In fiscal year. My hope is that the 1,900 can be found in the budget.
All right, let's just call it 1,900.
No question, thank you, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, I believe?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion also to make an adjustment to the board of assessor line. I'm gonna read you an email that came in from the chair of the board of assessors. We are going to move the entire PA wage line of $49,873.64 to consultants for FY '24. We will be hiring consultants to fill the void while we take the year to reassess the office and see what is the best plan. I'm away until Friday, how do I get this to the select board? Any help with the narrative would be appreciated. So basically, they're going to take the entire wage line and put it in the consultant. I believe they have plans to hire someone for the year.
So this is the principal assessor wage line?
Yeah, PA assessment, PA wage line, which is currently 4,9873.64 over to the consultants.
To move it down to consultants, add it to the consultant money that's already there, which is...
2,027.
2,750.
Yep.
And so that'll zero out that first line?
Yep.
And are they aware that they're going to have to go through a procurement process to do this?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on that? That seems pretty straightforward. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, hopefully that's all the existing shuffles, shuffles here. All right, moving back to the articles, so Article 11 becomes 12, which is transfer for townwide municipal departments operating FY '23 expenses, $1,376.85, basically toward photocopy leased paper, town hall gas, and electric.
Yeah, I gotta reword that now.
Two.
Because there's more.
More what?
It totals more, totals higher.
Yeah, this is more than 1,300 bucks, yeah, at least together.
So the amounts, the amounts are correct, but the total is wrong?
Correct.
Okay, did you pick that? Thank you.
You gotta line up your decimals.
Yeah, and my columns.
Yeah, okay, yeah, right.
Which is fun in this format.
Yeah, okay, so that one has a, has a change to be done, perfect, okay. Number 12 becomes 13, and that is transfer for workers' compensation operating expenses.
It's actually, did you add an extra one for the board of assessors? Oh, no, no, that was change of the operating budget, never mind.
Okay, 12 becomes 13, transfers for workers' compensation operating expenses for 6,181.33, and that's gonna come from the health insurance budget accounts. That one seems okay, Ed? No, no problems there?
And that total on, what for now, the Article 12 is 4,876.85.
4,800?
76.
76, 75.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And then, yes, Article 12, which will now be 13, is 6,181.33, that's correct.
Okay, then Article 13 becomes 14, and this is the transfers for the town audit expenses, and this is adding, transferring a total of $13,000 to cover the audit, and this is coming from the assistant town accountant, wages, and health insurance.
Correct.
Okay, 14 becomes 15, funds for EMS fire department operating, 23 expenses, 32,000 from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation into EMS certifications, ambulance EMS expense account, fire EMS building expense account for energy costs and ambulance billing. And this, remind me, this covers all those things that we had talked about in ARPA land, right? This covers the money that we had set aside.
So this, yes, once it, once this passes, that money...
That money can flow back in.
Right, exactly.
Perfect, thank you.
Same with mine on the early...
On the townwide one, right.
Early article.
Yep, okay. All right, Article 15 going to 16, transfer for code required, oh, transfer for what? Transfer for code required upgrade to town hall elevator. Oh, is this the first capital one? Okay.
Yeah, they should put...
An Article 16, old Article 16?
Article 15.
Yeah.
Old Article 15 becomes 16, and this is the first capital expense that we're seeing. So this is the transfer, the vote, transfer of $10,000 from capital stabilization to fund a town hall capital account, to fund the necessary code upgrade repairs to the town hall elevator. So maybe just take out code in the title there, transfer for required code up or...
Just move it.
Code upgrade.
Code upgrade.
Yeah, for required code upgrade to town hall elevator, and that's 10,000. And that came out on the, you have your sheet here, on the capital vote, which, no, it's on the backside, it's got the voting. You've got a double-sided page, on the backside is the voting. So they were given an estimate of $90,000 to work with as well as about the $40,000 carryover, so a total of around 130,000. 600 was all that they were given to work with, given that we don't have our actual free cash number back in right yet. With that, they put up their highest priority of all the ones that they looked at was the upgrade of the elevator that received the highest score, or $10,000. So that would be the first one coming up on our town meeting board. Any questions about that?
Comments?
Yes.
So just, I would point out that this wipes out everything that we did last year by trying to build this fund, and that it appears that in a full year, the $40,000 that was left there as seed money didn't earn a penny. So there's almost no sense in leaving this money set aside because it's not growing, so you might as well just spend it all.
Wow.
I mean, and I get it, I get that we have to buy all these things, but 40,000 is what we left there last year, so even if it did make the 411,000, that's less than 1%.
But the issue is, is they don't have the free cash to work with this year.
But they had 40,000 sitting on deposit for the full year.
And it didn't get moved into any kind of an investment account?
Right, I mean, even, again, and it comes down to staffing, you only have so many resources, I get all that, but money market at East Hampton Savings Bank, where the town does its money, banking right now is paying 3.8% on municipal accounts, could even have that, but...
Okay, well...
However, the other side of that is inflation is at 5 to 8%, which is more than what you'd earned, so...
But it's better to make something than nothing.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, now it's better off spending it instead of falling behind because of inflation.
Okay, so that is the first one, so let's just, I gather the next three or four are gonna come right through here.
The zeros, the senses, wrong.
Sorry, where?
The 73,000.
Okay, next one, so Article...
Oh, zero.
Article 16 now becomes 17, and this is the transfer for the police cruiser/pickup truck. So this is $73,000 from capital stabilization to purchase a Ford F-150 or equivalent pickup truck to be equipped as a cruiser as a replacement for an existing police cruiser.
So my question on that is, according to this, they approved an Explorer. The warrant article, who he says is an F-150, all I want to do is make sure the 73,000 matches an F-150 and not the Explorer that they have written down, that they voted for.
I checked with that today, and they, it was confirmed that it was the police chief's number one option, which was the pickup truck, F-150.
It is 73, enough?
Given the police chief is here.
I can go back to my office and actually look at the estimate if you want, just to make sure. But I believe it is, I believe means it was, I think it was...
It was 68 something without the movement for the Explorer, the radio and stuff.
So it's not an Explorer, it's a pickup truck?
It's the pickup truck, yes.
Yeah, F-150.
So the warrant is correct.
Correct.
So we should...
I just want to make sure the price tag and the description match.
Right, right. But it's gonna be called, it's gonna be used as a police cruiser, even though it's a pickup?
It's rated for police cruisers, yes, it's rated the same as an Explorer, it's just as more resources with the back card there.
Okay, so is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Then Article 17 now becomes 18, which is transfer for fire EMS vehicle exhaust extraction equipment, to see if the town would vote to transfer 30,000 from capital stabilization to fire EMS capital to fund the purchase and installation of a vehicle exhaust extraction equipment to be installed at the current highway station or take any action there too. And looking at this, I guess one of my questions was, this became the third option, or fourth option, well, there were three that tied at score, I'm sorry. So ranking number one was 40 points, was the elevator, 39 points was the cruiser, and then there are three things that tied at 37, north wing lockers at Norris School, vehicle exhaust extraction equipment at the fire station, and the tanker upgrade repairs at the fire station. So whichever, all three of those are in here, but the requested amount for this was 35, and they've approved 30, and I'm guessing that's because they put the locker one above it in their ranking.
Either way, there'd be 5,000 short.
Right.
So... I have a couple of questions on that, Dallas. You would think I would know this since I'm on Capitol, but PPP was meeting at the same time.
Yeah.
How confident is the town administrator in 35,000 actually being an accurate number for that system?
That's the first question.
Okay.
Well, the second question is, if he says yes, is, is that prevailing wage?
All right. We sometimes have reoccurring theme in this environment.
I understand. Prevailing wage for what?
For the people who do the work.
Yeah, question number one, is this just a quote for the equipment?
Right.
Or does it include installation? If it includes installation, was that quote for installation a prevailing wage?
Yeah.
Which one would have to pay?
And that didn't get presented to Capitol? I mean, we don't have the backup of what...
I wasn't there.
Yeah, but we don't have the backup of what went to Capitol in terms of the documents.
He just asked the question though, to the department, waiting for a response.
All right, so we'll get that response and maybe we'll come back to that. But I guess my, my brothers would be assuming, and the argument on the other side here was that it's a state mandate, so I mean, I'm all in favor of trying to follow whatever we've gotta do per the state to make things safer and healthier over at the existing station, but then they're, they're putting in a note here saying, recommend that 5,000 come from ambulance receipts, the way I'm reading that, or maybe ARPA, I'm not sure, but...
Well, we could just take the, I mean, there's another 5,000 in the budget, finance reserves. I mean, I believe there's only, did you already zero that out?
In reserves? We use it for the reserve account.
Next year's budget.
Oh, next year's budget, oh.
Next year's budget, because I thought...
Yes, we had 5,000 in the next year's reserve account, yes.
I think we only have one person running for finance board, so I don't even know the form to meet to spend that 5,000, so move the money.
Well, yeah, and I guess my question was going to be, well, I don't, I don't quite get the, in not knowing what the rationale is here, because we don't see that on our end, the rationale for the lockers, for example, over the vehicle exhaust, if that is a competitive, you know, one or the other, I mean, I would like certainly to fund the exhaust if that's a mandated safety issue. I would like to fully fund that somehow, whether it's putting it there and then having the shortage on the lockers, I don't know. I mean, is that an actual real cost too, for $16,600 to replace lockers at Norris School? And I don't know what the...
Well, they're not replacing, they're taking out the rusted ones, and so it's like a patch job of that, and it's, it's a little bit, I think last year when they asked for it, it was only 12,000 and change.
So it's the north wing lockers, I don't know how many that might be, but...
Probably fifth and sixth grade, right?
Yeah, that one had a quote that attacked, that came in with it, through Capitol.
Well, I guess we have to see what John answers on your questions there.
Well, I included installation at the time you got the quote, now I'm waiting for the response on prevailing wage, because prevailing wage is a lot different than...
There it is.
Right on the rights.
So John, you were saying if we put in 30 from this, we'd have 5,000 we could use toward.
Well, what I was saying is, right now, we have a line item for $5,000, we're funding the finance reserve fund at $5,000. I would say we move that money to the administrator, town administrator's expense line item with an earmark from the select board, or move it to the select board expenses, so that we know what that $5,000 is there for. That in conjunction with the 30,000, whether we use it to fund the exhaust, or we use it to fund the lockers, all four of those requests would be fully funded, assuming that this $35,000 is gonna be a full number.
The real number, right, yeah. And so that zeroes out completely the reserve fund, in next year's budget.
Is that he said, that's he said, that he, that it'd be a quote?
Right, and last year was the first time we put something in there, right?
Right, right, maybe, but we didn't have anything in there. Part of that was, but.
And we, and we could, again, once we get free cash, we don't always put something back in there.
Yeah, we only had 2,000 in it previously, and we upped it to 5,000, I believe. Couple of years ago, we only had 2,000 in it, we put it up to 5.
This one shows 22, it was zeroed, 22. But that was also the bad year.
Hmm, maybe, okay. All right.
John's, he's dancing. So if you had a percentage of probability that $35,000 is gonna cover this soup to nuts, would it be above you 0%?
So is, I mean.
Well, then I move to remove that article until we can get clarification, and then if need be, we print out special town meetings.
Why don't we put it, why don't we put it in the override?
No, I mean, I don't, I mean, I think this is one, I mean, granted, okay, if we don't have our figures right, then I don't know.
But then, this is my problem, we asked for 35.
Yeah.
We'll get the 35, and if this comes back in at 45, it's, it's like this ATV and trailer again.
Right.
And then when we get the money for that, it's like, well, now we wanna print lights on it. And it just keeps going and going, it's what's the number, where's the quote?
Well, the other thing is, could leave it on here.
And pass over.
And say, John, you better find out from that quote, if this is at the prevailing wage rates, and we need to know it by town meeting, or we're gonna ask to have that article passed over.
I'm fine with that too.
Except then we've also wasted 30 or $35,000 in capital stabilization.
Well, if we pass over, it'll stay in there, and then also keep in mind, July 1st, there's gonna be a different department head.
Right, but don't forget, the whole intent of this is to have them be safer.
Yeah, correct.
So it doesn't, you know, one or another.
So we can leave it there, as long as we can get the proper documentation saying.
Right.
This is what it is, or.
All right, so let's.
Otherwise, we're the ones that look like the idiots at the end of the day.
Right, well, in the long run, what we're trying to do is make things a bit safer over at the fire department, fire station, for sure. So it's a crucial need, I don't deny that at all, I just wanna have the right figure, and I would have favored, if we thought 35 was the right figure, I would have moved to raise that to 35 and make these, the lockers 5,000 less, that would have been my choice, if that's what we were playing with, but.
What about the reserve fund?
So.
You were gonna take the five from there.
Well, that's what he's saying.
Well, I'm happy with David there, I'm happy with 5,000 coming out of ARPA, I mean.
Yeah, so, so right now, we have 30,000 in here, and we know that we have to find at least five, and maybe more depending on John's answer, so maybe it's easier just to leave it the way it is, and know that we have to probably figure out where the excess money is coming from, whether it be reserve, ARPA, or something else.
Yeah, ARPA, we don't need a town meeting to do it.
Correct.
If we were to use the reserve fund, we have to have that in place before.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, I think we've.
Then, given three years being on a finance committee, I would, first thing I would probably say is, it's not unanticipated. You have the deliberations here and now.
Well, that's what I'd say, move the money now. Adjust the budget.
Oh, I got you.
I'd favor more ARPA, you know, we do have all those line transfers that are going back into ARPA, I just feel that.
That's fine.
We've got, you know, some of the money.
Reserve fund, I just hate to just bomb that out.
Yeah, I mean, some of that, that's where I'm gonna go, some of the money that we moved out, we had 10,000, I think we moved toward covering some of the overage in fire EMS expenses, that through the town meeting is gonna come back into ARPA, we can always reappropriate that towards this, and make this whole, whatever it's, whether it's 5,000 or 6,000 or something.
Something needed.
Yeah, okay, so it's needed, all right. So then Article 18 becomes 19, and this is the transfer for Norris Elementary School north wing locker replacement, and this is $16,672. And so basically, again, we don't get the benefit of the, all the paperwork that goes behind this, but I gather it's old and rusting out lockers, and that turned out to be the first priority of the school, from what we saw, they came in with other things regarding the carpet, the ceiling tiles, and refinishing the gym floor, and this was the highest priority from Norris School. Okay, any comment, question?
It's almost the exact same amount, is fixing the concrete out front there, that I just don't want anybody getting hurt there either.
Yeah.
It just seems like a little more of a priority than the lockers, but maybe we can figure that out, I just, that's just only gonna get worse, and a lot of people go in that entrance, if someone falls, we're gonna be sorry.
Yeah, and that scored just a couple of points less, it was 34 on the scoring sheet for 16,750, so this is outside concrete, so this is like the apron at the bottom of the steps here, right? And then the steps, and then some of the, along the railway, behind the bushes, they're heading down, and cracks in the foundation, so sidewalk and step replacement repair for 16,500. But we don't, right now, have enough money to do that. So the question is, in Capitol, whenever we get our free cash certified before town meeting, would we be able to add more money into Capitol, but they would have to meet and vote on it still, or they've already voted, we know the ranking, right?
We can't add articles, so, I mean, theoretically, let's just theoretically say that the, we find out that the exhaust extraction, with prevailing wage is 45,000 instead of 35,000. If you had more, that came in in free cash, and was allocated into capital stabilization and is available, then you could do an amendment on town meeting floor from the 30 to 45,000. However, contrary to that, could not just go and, even if you had the money, all of a sudden, say, oh, we want 45,000 for tanker upgrades, or 16,750 for the concrete sidewalk and step.
So I think, okay, so we have four, out of the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, six, that were somewhere in the, in the same ballpark, and the other one being before the concrete steps, the last one being 45,000 toward the tanker upgrade repairs on the fire truck, that was another one of the tie scores. And so obviously, they were working with what money they had to work with, what could fit in the budget, what could fit in the amount that they had to.
Correct.
To work with, not to say that the tanker upgrade repairs are not necessary, or the outside concrete is not necessary.
And then, if for, say, example, free cash comes in way in the vote where I estimated it at, and it's put into capital stabilization and some of the other ones, it's there in the future, so if you had a special town meeting, you can come back and say, okay, we wanna fund these next two capital requests on the scoring sheet.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would just say for the, I'll just get it out there for conversation when it comes up again, my problem with the tanker truck, 45,000 for that, we're only gonna be able to utilize that vehicle six, maybe eight months out of the year, it's sitting with 1,000 or 2,000 gallons of water out on the apron there, soon as the temperature drops to 32, the tank's gonna freeze, unless you leave it in permanent oscillating mode, which means the truck's gotta be running 24/7, there's nowhere to house it, and I'm pretty sure the whole station too at Peacock Pond probably doesn't have heat in it. So it's putting a lot of money into a truck there, unless he takes another one out of service, and gets that one into the wheelhouse.
So this is the one that got back on the road, though, to act as our tanker, we didn't have a couple of months ago, right?
Does it still have a standard transmission?
I, I don't know.
Does it still have a standard transmission?
I had heard that they were, somebody was trying to work on moving it from standard to automatic transmission, which.
Because they didn't have enough people that.
I thought that was one of the other vehicles that could be wrong, so.
So, but don't we only have, we have four, no, we have three, we've got two fire engines in the, in the bay there, and one sitting outside, is there another?
They used to have a military tanker, that I think they've gotten rid of, and I don't know, that is the one that had the standard transmission on it.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, hopefully we'll see as it comes up, but I mean, I think the idea of a tanker, having a tanker is probably a necessity for the town, but we need to look for.
I don't disagree, but where you gonna put it in January?
But we need to, but we need to look, you know, for it, maybe through grant money, or other ways to find that funding, and do, I mean, how much can you tinker and repair and get things that are gonna be workable for the one?
Right, well, do you need two engines? Should you have an engine and a tanker?
Maybe that'll be part of our assessment as we get forward, right?
Well, to John's point about why are we leaving money in capital stabilization if it's not making any interest, is there any possibility we're gonna have additional $16,000 in there to fund the repairs out front, or out the side entrance?
I have no idea.
Don't know until we get it back, but we're hoping for it back within, within this week, right? I mean, that's what you're.
I'm hoping tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that one 90, I'm sorry, the 90 that you put in there for placeholder, is based on their proportionate piece that would go in, or did you add the additional 25% that is gonna be available to go into some bucket?
I looked back over the last five years, took kind of an average of what our free cash certifications were, went with that, and then the 30, 35, 10, so, no, it does not include the, the other 25%. So, I mean, it's possible, but I don't know.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's keep on moving, so.
Theoretically, could you, could we add an article, and if we don't?
Yeah, pass over.
Pass it over.
I would favor, I would favor funding it if we had the money, yeah.
Funding which?
The repairs out on this main entrance of the town hall.
Yeah.
I mean, the other thing, we got that 30,000 flow back to ARPA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, okay, so I'm hearing then we would recommend adding.
$16,000.
One more article, so that would be.
$16,750.
A new 20.
Outside concrete sidewalk and step replacement slash repair. The step two, is that also crumbling?
Yeah, outside concrete sidewalk.
Because some of the handrail, shall we say, where it goes into the cement is like right at the top of the steps, the steps themselves are fine.
Who'd you get the quote from?
Oh, God, Town Company, no, can't, I'd have to go, I'd have to go look.
Okay, but did you put it on, like, convives?
Wait a minute, huh?
Did you put it up for, you had to actually bid on it to get a quote, or?
No, because actually, to do a bid, you actually physically have to have the money in hand.
Okay, yeah, okay. I'm just saying, the Holyoke Y, they just repaired their entrance and steps and everything, it looks fabulous.
Let's see.
Okay, so what I'm.
I might have it here.
What I'm hearing here is that we're inserting essentially a new article, which would be Article 20, to add one more for the capitalization, capital stabilization fund for $16,750 to work at repairing the outside concrete and sidewalk and steps at town hall. All right?
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So that becomes a new Article 20. What was Article 19 now becomes Article 21.
Let's see if we can hit 40.
Vote to establish a municipal life plan. So this is a second vote on the MLP, pretty much the same language, I think, as the first one, that we voted on a year or so ago, and this is a required second vote if we're gonna move forward and do any further investigation about doing that. Following that would be, Article 22 then becomes the vote to establish opioid stabilization account. This will be a special purpose stabilization fund, to be known as the opioid settlement stabilization fund, which may be expanded for all the purposes allowed by law, et cetera, et cetera. Looks like it's, oh, there, is there?
I think the article title should say opioid settlement stabilization account.
Okay, add the word settlement in there?
Yes, yeah, 'cause that's the source.
That's probably a good idea, yeah.
Western Mass Masons.
No, it's not very.
Western Mass Masons.
Okay.
There you go. Okay, so.
Did you add that one in? We're, Article 22.
Adding settlement.
Yeah, opioid settlement stabilization account, so that'll change there and on the magical table of contents. Okay, so that's Article 22 now, correct? Article.
Revolving accounts.
Yeah, revolving accounts becomes Article 23, revolving spending, revolving fund spending limits, those have all been added in there, did we, didn't we talk about the brush services part, were we not taking that?
No, we ended up not increasing it.
No, and we didn't increase it, but.
We decreased it from 20 to 10.
It was 20.
Okay, but, but the wording of purchasing brush firefighting equipment is still there?
Well, that's what that.
That's what it is, okay, okay.
See, I thought it was at 20, and then he had asked for a one time, last year's town meeting, it was increased to 20, wasn't it?
It was increased.
It was increased to 20, then he actually came in, and one of the wonderful effects of the UTV trailer again, he was looking for a one time increase to it.
And then we ended up not doing that, funding that out of ARPA, okay? I thought, I thought that even between all, before all this trailer nonsense, there was, it had been increased to 20,000.
We did a one time.
Well, no, it wasn't a one time, actually, last year, at the annual town meeting, we increased it to $20,000 with, on the theory that he was gonna use some of that to go towards purchasing the UTV and the trailer.
Okay, all right, so that's not needed anymore.
So we're okay with this, Chen? Yeah? All right. So then, Article 24 becomes the first of the community preservation projects, and this is basically the report of the CPC and their administrative expenses and reserve amounts. Number 25 is.
Those are actual numbers, right, Ed?
Yes.
Okay, number 25 then is the CPC funding for the footbridge in Manhan Meadows for the Conservation Commission, this is an additional $7,000 needed for completing the purchase of the materials for that bridge. Number 26 will be CPC funding for the grant match for the Greenway Design, and this will be the vote to transfer the sum of $65,000 from Community Preservation Surcharges Open Space Recreation Account to the Greenway Committee, and this is for the matching grant funds for the design work that is starting to take place for the Greenway. Article 27 becomes CPC funding for construction of playground at Le Bree Field, and this is in the amount of $241,413.36 from CPC to the Park Commission, to be used to construct a fully accessible playground at Le Bree Field, number 27 then. Then we come in to number 28, which is renaming of East Street Bridge, to see if the town will vote to, with the existing, for the existing bylaw, general town, town general bylaws, to rename the East Street Bridge in memory of John V. Garska.
Question, if I may.
Yes.
Why does this one say renaming? Was it named for someone before?
Well, no.
You just referred to it as East Street Bridge.
Yeah, it's always been known as East Street Bridge, so maybe it's naming rather than renaming.
Yeah, it's probably just named. It does say and includes signage, to that effect, I guess we'll just find the fund somewhere.
Well, yeah, and my, from past experience, my recommendation is a metal sign and a post.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Because the other side of that, and this goes back probably at least 12 years, is a bronze plaque, at that time, 12 years ago, about yay bidding, was 1,200 bucks.
Metal, metal sign, probably.
It's a little metal side, if the family wants to do something.
Yeah, they can do something else, but.
But I also think that there are funds, I mean, there's an initiative to name bridges after veterans, so I wonder if there might be some initiative where funding might be So I wonder if there might be some initiative where funding might be available for that purpose.
Good question for our veteran agent.
Yeah. Speaking of our veteran agent, well, I'll keep going.
Speaking of.
I said I'll keep going.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so we're getting rid of re and just naming of East Street Bridge. Thank you. Good, good catch. Number 29 will be, the new 29 is naming of accessible playground at Le Bree Field. And this is to name this new playground that hopefully will be approved under the CPC fund. Addage magical playground for Mattie Schmidt. Number 30 is the amendment to the general bylaws for renumbering and recapping of the general bylaws.
That all looks great.
That's number 30. And we got all those little edits already.
You're not going to read every single page, are you?
No, definitely not. So do that. That just shows, that just, that just shows where the changes have been noted by council, et cetera. So that was 30. Hello. Was that the only one?
One, 29 on the next page, technically.
Missing it. So there we go. So then this is 30, 29 becomes 31. And this is to adopt all the various changes as cited here in the six or seven pages that follow.
Up to page 20.
And then, yes, and then we go to page 20, which then becomes the zoning bylaw changes, which now becomes Article 32. So this is the amending, the zoning bylaws, amending of the zoning map and the bylaw section 3B by amending the map.
Yeah, from petition.
Yeah, all right.
And that's the sixth page.
No, this.
No, the next one is.
The next one. This is the zoning map. This is for the, changing the, the zoning of the commercial, sorry, industrial park to commercial on College Highway.
So that's 33.
That's 32. And then the zoning bylaws themselves for this table, which will be an attachment. Is that correct?
Yes.
So is that zoning bylaws?
Ends up being attachment C.
Okay, so this is, what do you, I lost myself. We are at number 33, right?
Yes.
I just suggested putting attachment C on the top of this so that people, I guess, by right of argument.
Right, attachment C on the.
Well, because it's like PDF that I can't change, it makes it difficult.
Oh.
Just have Judy put it.
Yeah, just write it in.
Well, no, I'll have her make a one label.
Or a label.
Put it all for you.
Okay, so the last one is 33 then. Repeal and replace existing zoning bylaws amended by the planning board and the revisions edited by General Code Corporation for Chapter 275. So that will have Table C here as the basically attachment to that and whatever else is. That's where their zoning bylaw detail. So that's where we are.
We need a motion to approve it as a amendment.
I think we're at 33, so I will take a motion.
So moved.
Motion by John. Can I have a second? By Joy, all right. Always in favor of amended. Aye.
Aye.
All right. And Rini, you had a question?
No, it occurred to me the other day that our veteran agent is actually deployed. And I just wondered if there was something that we could do to acknowledge or to wish him well and safe and all that, so.
Okay, we have a replacement company. It's like, we do have that much.
She's from Eastham.
We do have that at least.
Anyway, I'd be willing to write up something if it's like.
If you would like to do that, that would be fun.
That'd be great. And our intro one is doing a wonderful job. Beat me to the punch when I was going to ask her if we've ordered the flags for the seminaries for Memorial Day. Yet, or not. And then she wasn't getting an answer from the company that we usually get the flags from when she tried to order them. So I looked at some of our vendors and our vendors were about 33% more expensive. So she reached out to some of her peers and actually found, and we've been buying T-shirts and stuff from them, found that most of them are now using MasCor, which is a state program. It actually works through the, shall we say, penal institutions. And they have some great pricing and some good products. And they have the same pricing for the flags that the vendor that we used to utilize had. So it was great. Saved me a lot of work.
Okay, so a couple more things we have on the agenda. We have to.
Make a motion to approve the warrant for the annual town election, May 16, 2023.
And I'm going to go disappear probably for about half an hour and make these changes.
A second.
Okay, all right. So we all just have to sign this.
Under discussion.
Yep, is there anything?
So I'm okay with leaving it the way it is, but for the next warrant, I'm not a co-chair, just a vice chair. I can't bounce her out of her seat. I'm happy to sign it as a co-chair.
The last date still says May 1st for the annual town meeting. You can just change that at the very end before the signatures. But it still says, my electronic copy, maybe you changed it.
How do you actually, I think I changed it, but I changed it to the first instead of a.
Yeah, you changed it to the first.
Yeah, we have provided the date on the actual warrant here anyway, so.
We have the original, sorry, right?
Should we sign?
Yep.
I have the warrant to sign.
But I'm saying right here, it still says.
Right, but it's blank right here.
Oh, okay, okay.
So given under our hands this first day of May, yes?
Call for the vote.
Yes, can we have a vote on the warrant?
Aye.
Do we have a second on that? Sorry. We did, okay. Second. We did, okay. Okay, all right. So we have the town election warrant. We put in our first day of May. Correct, Lucy?
Day of 23.
2023. And then just pass these around, sign it.
And for the record, select board is two words. And we, it's spelled differently in so many different places.
Every time we try to correct it, it's.
It comes back one more. Yep. All right, so we've got a couple more things. We've got one thing under any other business, and then we've got minutes to approve. So just briefly, under any other business, I, we're very late at pulling together. Well, Judy's got all the stuff that she's going to get, I think, for the annual town meeting, annual town report. But we had not really decided on a dedication, so I had drafted one. Shoot, I shout it around to you all, just recognizing our numerous volunteers in town. If anybody has any thoughts about that, I'd rather not have a blank page for dedication, which is the only reason I did that and.
I like it.
I like it. I think it's very nice.
So if everybody's okay, I'll just take a vote to include that as our dedication.
I'll make a motion to approve the dedication of the annual town report to Southampton volunteers, according to the write-up. Nice write-up.
So I guess, all right, so Rini and Francine, and discussion, yes?
It was John.
No discussion.
Okay, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, now, next we have minutes to approve from February 14, and then March 7.
I'm going to approve minutes from February 14.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Anybody see anything on hand?
I don't know, just see if I made some moves.
I didn't have any notes myself on the 14th, but it's a lot of pages here. All right, so we have a motion and a second. February 14, minutes. Are we ready for a vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And a motion for March 7, minutes, please.
So moved.
Second.
And Joy's second, okay. Everybody ready to go on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining. Okay, Rini abstaining? So, Joy, did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, so four approved, one abstained. All right, those are taken care of. So that gets us back onto the agenda for a second. We've got select board meetings now on the, the ninth, which would be a short meeting preceding the town meeting as usual. And then a meeting on May 23, and then the town election on May 16. And one thing we will add on here is that we have concluded the, two things. The date for the community forum, community meeting that we're talking about at our school will be May 24, and we'll just nail down that time, whether it's going to be 6:00, 6:30, or 7. We tend to do these meetings at 7 when they're at the school. We do these at 6. I don't know.
School to difference?
Yeah, I was going to say maybe 6:30 at the school on May 24 and try to do that. And there's going to be a pre-meeting, hold on a second, with the consultant for, for the town heads of department that have been requested to, to be there, which would be police, fire, water, highway, and the planning board chair, and certainly select board is invited. This is going to be on, I believe it's going to be this Wednesday, so the day after tomorrow, at 2:15 here at town hall. So this is going to be a meeting with the consultant to kind of go through some of the details, the organization of the meeting, get any thoughts from, from those people about how, how and what they have to, to present. And I'm just going to pull this up for a second here. Just a sec. Two seconds here. So basically, it's going to be just a chance to get to meet the consultant facilitator, sort of look at general hopes and concerns about the public meeting, specific public meeting related questions and suggestions, and just overall preparation and kind of technical or logistical issues. If I'm correct, so we'll have East Hampton Media there for that. I'm thinking we do have a pulldown screen at Norris. Am I not right on that? I think we have.
We have on this stage.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
We have it, I think, for the senior center meeting. And somewhere we must have a projector if we need one somewhere too, which.
Or is that something we get from E-Media?
Nah, maybe. We'll check that. So I think we probably need that at least. It would be nice, you know, rather than having our sort of typical format of lines of chairs to be a little bit more, more informal if we can, but I don't think there's much, much, you know, there's no, there's no round tables or anything like that to sit around, like big round tables or anything. But we might figure out a way to look at just rearranging the, the configuration of the seating a little bit, so it's a bit more conducive. I don't know. And maybe having a couple of hand mics as well that could be passed around. So there's a pre-meeting anyway on, on this Wednesday at 2:15 here. I'm going to suggest it be upstairs here, where it's a little bit more conducive to getting everybody to talk. And those, you guys would like to come, you're welcome as well.
Well, so is the public meeting?
It's, I don't think, it's, it was a planning meeting. It wasn't, I don't think it.
Right, but if you made it optional for the entire select board to attend, that therefore doesn't it make it a public meeting?
Would have to be. If you have a quorum.
So more than two of us show up.
Good point. I don't know.
I will not be able to go.
Yeah, you said. I will not be able to make it.
You won't either?
Oh, well, maybe this is getting easier.
I'll be here. Let's see. Yeah, I forgot. Good point.
I mean, we can figure it out.
It's tomorrow, 2:15?
Wednesday, 2:15. Wednesday at 2:15 and I don't know, I think Ed, this is the one Ed said he was posting? Yeah, May 13, 2000. He posted it, so.
So it is public.
Okay.
He posted it as an internal meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, he said it's an event, not, not subject to open meeting laws, so it's an internal meeting, so.
So we all show up.
So, okay.
I won't be there. I'll try.
Yeah, but if you'd like to, so that's fine.
Could I make an update?
Yes.
Tomorrow, Ed Gibson, myself, and Mark Darnold, the Chair of the Public Safety Building Committee, has a Zoom meeting to negotiate with HKT on the feasibility study.
All right.
And on the senior center side, the attorney plus the executor are reviewing the feasibility study and determining the plan, you know, whether or not it meets the requirements.
Okay.
And the Public Safety, I mean, the Senior Center Ability Committee meeting, group is meeting on Thursday, so I don't think we'll have final by then. But that's, they're both moving along.
All right. Good, good to know that that's all moving forward. Yeah, okay. So we will be having an executive session, but I think we have to wait till Ed comes back so we can sign this warrant.
Well, so I was just thinking, I mean, there's no reason why we can't recess from the public session, go have our executive session, come back into a public session and continue.
Yeah, we could just say that we're going to come back to open session.
Because, I mean, I don't know how long executive is going to take, but if it's 10 or 20 minutes, I'd rather, because you promised an hour.
I know. I know I did. I know I did.
Instead of waiting.
Yeah, the only thing, and this was, we were going to have, I think Ed was going to join this.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
So, but we can certainly take a motion to recess right now.
Before we do, did we go over the, we received a letter from our local Girl Scout troop. It refers to no May mow best.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, no, May. And I just, because it is the May 1st, I would like to, if possible, if we could just read their letter.
Sure.
Yeah.
Do you have it handy?
Yeah, I do. This is from Girl Scout troop 64924 in Southampton. And they write, Dear Southampton Select Board, please participate in no mow May, which means no mowing in May. If you mow every week, then the pollinators can get killed. Can you change the mowing schedules to every other week to give pollinators a chance? I don't think we can tell people when they can mow, but I would like to advise people to maybe do every other week or maybe once, once a month for, for May.
So I would make a motion that we forward that letter on to our highway superintendent and ask him where, possible, on public lands to go every two weeks.
I will second that motion.
Yeah, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I think the challenge, I mean, oftentimes, Le Bree Field is one of the tough ones where they need to probably keep it mowed, you know, for soccer and all those kinds of things. But there are others, I mean, over at the transfer station, for example, or some other places that might not need to be.
But there could be certain sections, like where the fencing is, you know, the flowers.
There could be certain, certain areas set aside perhaps, and just experiment with that and see how it goes. So, yeah, let's, let's go ahead and we'll forward that off to.
Okay, sure.
Off to Randall.
Send my email.
So before we actually take a recess, do I need to read the reason that we will be going into executive session? Are we going to just recess?
No, we're going to recess.
What do we get?
Are we going to recess and come right into, and just, we're going to come back as soon as the words.
I was hoping Ed would be back.
And then do executive affairs. So we would just recess.
Yeah, so let's take a motion. I'm sorry, yes.
So I'm going to just wait till the morning for him to bring back the warrant for you to sign. Because I don't know how long he's going to be. Do you think he's going to be longer?
Well, we'll sign it tonight, but if you can post it tomorrow morning, if that's fine.
Well, I asked the council if he can pick it up in the morning, so he hasn't answered yet. But, so this is good. If the numbers change at the meeting, we'll just do the explaining at the election. We can't cross anything else on the ballot because it won't go through the machine, but we'll just explain the best we can, and we can get through it. We won't worry about it. Just maybe the, you know, maybe at the meeting, there'll be some explaining that, you know.
Hopefully, we don't have to make too many changes.
Hopefully, we won't have to explain it.
This one kind of came a little bit out of left field for us, but, yeah. So, thank you, Lucy.
But we're good.
Good. All right, so I'll take a motion to recess briefly.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. All right, thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are recessed at about 8:47, thereabouts. Okay, the Southampton Select Board is back in session after a recess. This is the May 1st meeting, and the time is 8:37. And we're back with some revisions to our budget for the town meeting and a revised town meeting warrant, I believe, that we will be able to hopefully sign. Did everybody get a new town mark last? Did I get one? No.
Yeah.
Who gave you?
You didn't get?
No.
Hey, you started right there.
This is the old one.
Oh, well, I passed.
Thank you. Thank you, Becky.
Sorry.
Okay, so. Let us see where we have to look at a couple things. So I'm going to assume. Got one, one thing on the table of contents that I see, Ed. Last one should be Article 33 rather than 31.
There you go.
Yeah.
Where do you see that?
It took me as long, it took me a long, as long to do the table of contents as changing the budget in the ATM. So why don't you go through it, make sure, especially in the table of contents, and see if I made any other little tweaks before I go change it.
All right. All right. And just, just note on the table of contents, since you've got the budget attachments there, would you want to also put that Table C for the zoning bylaws there, as I know, maybe? Just so that that's clear as a, as an attachment.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's look at the table of contents first to make sure we got all of our new, new crazy articles in here. Take that quick look on things here. So, so we have our transfers, capital operating, OPEB was still 123, five-year contract, which four?
Article 5, the spelling assessment, Hampshire Regional Assessment, should be an S and an E, or you're missing.
Which one?
Spell wrong, assessment, Hampshire Regional Assessment.
On the table of contents?
The title.
Oh, I'm sorry, right, on the actual title of the article.
Oh, where do, I'll just get one of those. Article 5 on the table has got transferred from operational stabilization for Hampshire Regional Operating Budget. So, okay, so here, assessment, yeah, type of there, that's Article 5, so that, just says the-
And you're right, a hamster's assessment, so I rely on its spell check.
So that word assessment is not in the table of contents if it needs to be?
No.
Okay, number six was the annual operating budget for '24.
So-
Right, that's correct, right.
So the 1907, 19,007.
Is correct.
Stays the same, however, we have the 350, yeah, 350, 387, okay.
357, I thought it was 341, 792.
So Article 7.
That might have been what they were giving back to us, I went back to their original assessment to us, and plugged that number, and that's what it came, 352.
Okay, so the supplemental budget is number seven, that's our override budget, right? That's 332, that's, that's correct, yeah. Number eight was the transfer station, number nine is water and ties. Let's just check we've got them all in order here.
Yeah, and they're on the, and they're on the right pages.
Okay, and number 10 is transfer for police, 11 is library, 12 is townwide, 13 is workers' clubs, 14 is town audit, 15 is EMS operating, number 16 is required code upgrade, okay. Hang on, repairing the pages here. 17, 17, okay, we put in one here, let's see. Okay, 17, transfer for police cruiser.
Was it at 150?
Oh, pickup, yeah, okay, 18 is the EMS vehicle exhaust at 30,000, transfer for Norris School North Wing is 19, a new 20 is the Town Hall sidewalk step concrete repairs.
19 and 20 are redundant on what?
On the table of contents.
Okay, check table of contents. Yeah, 19 should be the lockers, and 20 should be the-
The sidewalk.
The sidewalk.
21 is municipal light plant, 22 is opioid settlement stabilization, so it's not in the table of contents too. We've had the word settlement in the table of contents if we can, I think it's that one. Opioid settlement, yeah. 23 is revolving fund spending limits. 24 is the first CPC. 25 is the footbridge in Manhattan Meadows, 26 is the grant match for bringing in design. 27 is the construction of the playground at La Bree. 28 is naming of E Street Bridge.
In the table of contents, you have renaming, so if you want to take the re-up.
Thank you, yep. 28, okay, 29 is the naming of the accessible playground at La Bree. 30 is the amendment to bylaws for re, uh, no, that might be wrong for that title, Ed. We picked that up last time, is it? Is this the general?
The first one will be your E-code.
Oh, that's the E-code, okay, that is right, okay, that is 30, yep.
Okay, can I just say that bylaws is not hyphenated? It's hyphenated in the, in the table of contents?
Okay.
And in the category in the warrant.
Yeah, just the, the bold category, yeah, we've got it right in the, in the text otherwise.
Yeah.
Just in the gray part where we're making the category, yeah.
Where?
And the, so in the, in the table of contents, and then on the, when you get into the, the text on page 20, page 11, sorry, general bylaw amendments in the gray box on page 11.
Take this hyphen out here.
Then it would be incorrect.
That's what we've been doing all the way, all the way through, from bylaws from general code.
The rest of it is-
Yeah, that's the way it's been-
It's not hyphenated.
All this stuff, yeah. But on page 11, it's in there too.
Yep.
Just in that gray box, the general bylaw amendments. Okay, so that's number 30, just in that gray box, it's the hyphen in it. Let's see, maybe five pages here, just a second. And, so there you might go. So then 31 is the amendment to general bylaws, correct? And then 32-
The captions for zoning bylaw may be changed too, with the hyphens.
Yeah, that's just the gray, the gray box on page 20 as well, we've got the hyphen, and that's the zoning for College Highway, zoning map, and then 33 is the repeal of the existing zoning bylaws, so, yeah, just, just in those boxes to pick up the, the hyphen. Yeah, so we got 33 of them, and the first, 2023, looks like plan, yep, it's almost, almost, so just those mini changes. So it's that last one is on the table of contents, yeah, we've got that right. Okay.
Lost a whole bylaw. Or article.
Where?
31.
No, it's right there, it's right before all of that level of detail, I think it's-
Was it ever really used, like?
It's on the, it's on page 12, top of 12, yeah, it's there, so that's okay, yep. So, I guess, question, we need to sign this so that it can be posted tomorrow morning, but do we, do we need to look at what you've done in the budget then? Just point out what, what happened here on this?
Whatever you ask, the four, the four changes are in there.
Okay, so we-
The library for 1900, the assessors.
Yep. Okay.
Hampshire Regional?
And the Hampshire Assessor. I forgot the big one.
Both were wrote out. You added it to, added it to-
Yeah, I see the assessors. So the assessors went down.
Yep, and it was added to the consultants.
And administrator changed from the, for the library one, right?
Uh huh.
Okay. And then, so then Hampshire Regional is now 562. And what we were, we were suggesting, Ed, as we hand out the budget, that that, John, you were saying to make that an obvious distance from-
Yeah, I wonder, I don't know.
I don't know.
To make it easier on Robert, I don't know how difficult it would be, if education, maybe we did-
There's a space in between there?
Either break that single line out, or, you know, like the two lines there, or we did local and then regional, you know what I mean? That won't be able to be changed till tomorrow because it's Bradley's workbook, so.
Yeah, okay.
But that makes sense, yeah.
You know, subtotal there, we could approve that group, and then when we get to the regional.
Okay, it's a separate subtotal.
That'll be good.
And then, yeah, so I'm just thinking that through, so if that becomes the regional, and then there's voc and transportation, so we could then ask to go line by line for those three lines.
For?
If you do local, and then the regional, and the regional is where your vocational and transportation is, I don't think there's any objection to passing those two line items.
Right, yeah, yeah, so the, well, local, yeah, the way it would read out would be local is two, there's two for voc, and then-
Well, that's fine, you want to do it in three groups?
I mean, if we, I mean-
That would make sense.
Well, actually, I believe the vocational transportation is tagged onto Norris. It is, obviously, in the way it flows here, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, well, if it is then, okay, then maybe it is just broken into two groups then.
Yeah, because the interesting thing is, Chair of the elementary school, I sign off on the bills for the vocational.
Oh, okay, that is kinda weird. Okay, well, if they're both considered, so Norris and vocational are considered-
Yeah, because they're from the town.
Part of that local bucket then, then we could just make that-
They're in ninth grade, they're gone.
We could make that a two things.
It took me two years to actually get that one straight. And again, that's one of the oddities, we have our own local elementary school districts and regional.
Okay, all right, so I guess we have a couple of questions, because I know people and everybody would like to not spend lots of hours here tonight, either to have you make these changes now, or to do them first thing in the morning, and then we find you and get our signatures on it.
I'll fill it right now.
Yeah, but we want to still do, unless we decided not to do the executive session tonight, could we do that?
You can do that, it's up to you, whatever you want to do.
I'm assuming he lets you know about the vote of Hampshire Regional, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so see, see how you do it, if we, you know, if it's a few minutes, we can, we can hang in here, so we'll take another mini recess?
Sure.
All right, we will recess at-
9:50.
9:50, yeah, okay, we are resuming the select board meeting of May 1st after a short recess, we actually recessed at 8:50, not 9:50, and it is now 9:05, and we are back in session, looking at the last corrections of the town warrant, town meeting warrant. Okay, who's got eagle eyes this time? I don't think we need to go through everyone again.
We've got the articles, the transfers, right, right.
Rini, geez, oh, sorry.
I need glasses.
Yeah.
33 is changed.
It's good to me.
Looking good, Ed, I think we do it.
Do you need an official motion to approve it?
I think we do need an official motion to approve it.
I move to accept the Town Southampton Annual Town Meeting warrant for Tuesday, May 9, 2023, 7:00, 7:00 PM, to be held, and version being approved is the May 1st, 2023.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, yeah, this is great, thank you, thank you, okay, so that, that is that, and I think, and we have the slightly revised budget from a minute ago, so I think that-
Can I ask you a question about, I know you weren't there, John, at the meeting of this capital, but, quick question, one, one question, sorry. But about the IV pumps, that was also something that was supposed to be regulatory, wasn't, do you know?
We put it in our, in the override.
It's in the override.
What's that?
The IVs.
Yeah, and was there anything else on any of these things that didn't get funded that is a plan for and not, or just didn't make the cut?
I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, I know.
So a couple of those that are kind of borderline, you know, if we end up having some extra money, we can come back and look around, or as Ed said, we might need a special town, you know, add a special town meeting if we have more money available for capital, we can take a couple of those smaller ones up perhaps, but, okay, I think that settles all of our business, we went through, we approved the minutes, Ed, and we got through everything in that regard, so.
There were no changes in the minutes.
Yeah, no changes in the minutes, and, let me just pull out my hand jumper here for a minute, so, with that, I think we will be actually going into a very short executive session, so I will read the reason for that, let's see, all right, so we will be moving into an executive session per MGL chapter 30A, section 21A2, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator, so could I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved, second.
Okay, Francine and John, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at 9:10?
What?
Do we need a roll call on that?
Do we need a roll call to go into executive session?
Oh, let's just do one.
Lumber, aye.
Tishma, aye.
Bowls, aye.
Paper, aye, sorry.
All right, thanks, we are adjourned and going into executive session, and we will not be returning, so we will be ending this meeting at 9:10, in terms of the open session.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.